We'll call the meeting of the Medina County Board of Commissioners to order. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our prayer for the morning, Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust.
Amen.
So first up on our agenda is Grace Calucci, who is the executive director of NOACA. So good morning, Grace.
Good morning. Commissioner Hudson, Commissioner Hambley, and Commissioner Sweattick, along with I see many of our other NOACA family, Engineer Conrad, of course, who was a board member, Director Dentler, who is on our Business Advisory Council, and Mr. Ryan, who is on our Transit Council. Did I miss anybody?
Patrick Patton.
Oh, I can't see you with the mask. And yes, Mr. Patton, who is also a board member.
Correct.
Correct. So thank you very much for having me here today. First, let me tell you that I appreciate very much the feedback from Medina County. We are in the process of developing our long-range plan, and we have been developing aspects of it for about a year and a half now. So we start the very public portion of that about 18 months out before we adopt it, and we have done many things to try and get public input into that process. And when we say public input, some of it, of course, we are speaking of the general public, but mostly we're speaking of our stakeholders because they actually have more familiarity with the specifics around that, and of course, from our elected officials. So in that process, we have done many things, such as round tables that many of you have participated in, town halls that you might have participated in. We did a crowd gauge tool. We did a statistically significant survey. And all of that is to try and ascertain what people want and what they would be looking for in a transportation system that is the transportation system that would support the region. And we look out 30 years. So normally, we look out 20 years, but because 2050 was a nice round number and because of the many long-term kinds of projects that we were looking at, it made more sense to do 2050. And so with that, we developed four scenarios. This is the first time that we did scenario planning for the long-range plan. Normally, what the NOACA staff would do is develop one scenario, and then we would have that scenario and allow people to comment on it. And we would hope that that one scenario would capture what it is that people want in that system. This time, we decided to do four scenarios, giving people more of an option to look at what it is that could be part of the system and what that impact would be. So we intentionally did four stark scenarios to be able to ascertain that impact of each one of them. And the scenarios are maintain, car, transit, and total. And with the car scenario, I'm sorry, with the maintain scenario, it very much aligns with the trend scenario that is often called the trend scenario in some scenario analyses. With that, and I guess I should probably say, those scenarios all have the same basis, which the same basis is a level of state-of-good repair or payment conditions of, I think, 75 out of 100. They all have some very basic things to them that would have been sort of the scenario, that would have been the only scenario had we done a scenario, just one. So they've got, start with that. Then with maintain, we elevate all of the state-of-good repair from a PCR of 75 to a PCR of 80. And so that we're going to focus our funding on that component. In two, car, we add some additional kinds of improvements relative to auto access.
Get rid of that ringing noise really quick. I'm sorry.
Sure, no worries.
I'm sure it's bothering none of you here.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
No problem.
Just as a point of clarification, you referred to PCR.
Oh, I'm sorry, payment condition ratings. Yes.
Right, just just those.
You're right. Some, yes, yes. And the idea is the payment condition ratings would be higher under maintain because we would put more resources into elevating it to that higher level. Again, in the car scenario, we're looking at making some improvements to the automobile environment, such as interchanges and such. When you get to transit, we had a visionary scenario that was included in the last long-range plan. And when we say visionary, a long-range plan must be what we call physically constrained, I'm sorry, fiscally constrained. I feel physically constrained because of COVID for 18 months, but no, I meant to say fiscally constrained. So you cannot put projects into the long-range plan based on the federal regs unless you can have a source of funding to pay for them. And so public transit, particularly both for Cuyahoga County and regionally, was something that in the last plan, many of our partners wanted us to look at, specifically Cuyahoga County Executive. Armon Buddhist asked us to take a look at a more robust system for public transit in Cuyahoga County, as well as many of our other members in the outlying counties asked us to look at public transit going into their business districts. And so as we did that, we did come up with a plan that is about, well, in 2017 was $14 billion for public transit. That isn't something even, you know, even those that are, I guess, even those that wanted us to really be strong in the public transit, still could not determine a way to really pay for that, that they were willing to document and to put out there. So we put it sort of as an illustrative project. So we're allowed to do that and say, this is something that we have looked at. It's something that our members may want, our region may want, but we don't have identified funding for it. So we cannot, in good faith, keep it into the long-range plan. So we did have that transit plan as an illustrative visionary. We did include that in Scenario Three with some adjustments. And essentially that visionary plan, and I apologize, I normally have PowerPoint, so I'm, that's my crutch, and so I've got lots of visuals, but I don't have those visuals. So I'm trying to describe them as best as I can. But those visual, when you talk about the transit plan that we have in the 2017 Aim Forward Long-Range Plan, when you look at that and you say, well, what is in here? We took the 1968 plan for NOACA, its long-range plan. So in 1968, that was when the organ, the agency was first formed, and it had its long-range plan. And there were two components of that long-range plan. One was the roadway or highway system, and the other was transit. And the roadway-highway system was entirely built out. So the plan that was there in 1968 has been accomplished and more. There have actually been more roadways in terms of the highway network that was built out. On the transit side, hardly anything was done. So in 1968, the transit system that was there, there's only been an addition of two miles of transit relative to the rail system. And on the bus side, it's contracted quite a bit. So in reality, we have a much smaller system than we had in 1968. So in the 2017 plan, part of what we were looking at, and we were coming up on our 50th anniversary, so we did want to focus very closely on that 1968 plan and see what did we accomplish and what do we still have to do as a region. In doing that, we said we needed to focus a little bit more on the transit. That's essentially what's represented in Scenario Three. And the rail system mirrors what the highway system was according to that 1968 plan. So you have a rail system that goes down 71, goes across 480, goes down 71 into Medina, so it actually connects to Medina, 480 east to west, so connecting Lorraine to Cuyahoga County. It has 90 east, connecting Cuyahoga County to Lake County, and then 90 west going to Lorraine. So every county has additional rail service in terms of rail system, except for Geogee County. They did not want public transit, and there really isn't the density there to warrant it. So we did not put any in Geogee County. And so that's the plan. That's essentially what is represented in Scenario Three. And then Scenario Four was an attempt to try and take the best parts of one, two, and three that made sort of reasonable sense and that looked like it might, because at this point, when we finalized the scenarios, it was probably December-January timeframe. So we've, at this point, gained about a year's worth of information from people and saying, what do people want, and trying to come up with something. So that total scenario is essentially representative of many of the different components of the other scenarios, but then also really emphasizing new technology. So maximizing on the autonomous vehicles, maximizing on, and when we say vehicles, shuttles mostly that are included in that scenario, maximizing the Hyperloop. So the Hyperloop is a project that we have looked at. We completed a feasibility study last year, and it, the Hyperloop is a new form of transportation based on technology. And it's a hybrid between an airplane and a train, essentially. So airplane speeds at ground level, and it's Chicago to Cleveland to Pittsburgh, or Cleveland to Pittsburgh, Cleveland to Chicago. That is included in Scenario Four. And so we have a substantial amount of research that was done, analysis that was done, to determine what the impacts of the Hyperloop would be. And we put that in Scenario Four. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, the distinguishing points between the scenarios. And they are intentionally stark to help demonstrate what are the impacts. Some of the questions that you raised in your letter that you sent us, which again, thank you very much for that feedback. We appreciate it when our stakeholders, and especially folks who are on the NOACA board and the councils and committees, take their role seriously and really take a look at what it is that they want and let us know that. That's why we have the meetings. That's why we have the outreach. We did the stakeholder meeting with the economic development directors, the county engineers, and the county planning directors at one time, to be able to have that discussion and then get that feedback. We also then had one with the transit agencies and ODOT. We thought that was a nice combination, ODOT and transit agencies, so they could understand what it is that we're looking for in those scenarios. And so we appreciate the feedback. But I want to be clear that I think there might have been either some, I mean, they're complicated scenarios, and you can only discuss so much in an hour and a half meeting. And so not all of it perhaps was communicated as best as it could be. And so to be clear, in terms of population and job growth, we do use the same estimates that come from the Ohio Department of Development as those baseline scenarios. So Scenario One and Scenario Two, Scenario Three, Four, they all start with those assumptions. So we do not create our own population assumptions. They are whatever the state has. And the state typically, over the trending of the last number of decades, couple of decades, has essentially has seen Cuyahoga County restrict in population and jobs, and then the exurban counties are often are called the counter, the collar counties, grow both in population and in jobs. And you've seen that trend over the last number of decades. You've seen it played out. That is what is included. So that's what we started with. And when you look at the maintain scenario, if you're looking to keep the road network intact, but simply make it better from a maintenance perspective, it's going to add to that. So it does have impact that strengthens the Ohio Department of Development's projections. And so it does remain relatively constant in that trend growth. The same with car. So car, the amenities that are added for the car scenario strengthen that. So you will see slight changes in the population and jobs, as has been the trend for the last few decades. When you get to transit, there have been changes made to the population and to the jobs related to just that transit component that's been added. So it starts with the same analysis as Scenario One and Two, and then layers on top of it, the transit component that says, if we have a much more robust transit system, $14 billion worth of a robust transit system, what is the impact to jobs and what is the impact to population? And based on industry guidelines and understandings, there would be additional growth in population and jobs near transit hubs. That would be the idea. And so yes, you do see growth there. Then you see even more growth in Scenario Four, because you are looking at the transit scenario that's been layered in there, and then the Hyperloop. And the majority of the population and job growth that you see in Scenario Four is related to the Hyperloop. And so if we choose not to put the Hyperloop in there, you would see it go very down close to three. If we choose not to put the transit plan in there because we don't have it fiscally constrained, we don't have the finances identified, then you end up much more with what you have in one and two, which is typically what you're accustomed to seeing. So that's kind of what the scenarios try to show in a nutshell. And we don't intend to select one scenario and move forward. The idea is to isolate the different impacts so we can see what happens. But the idea would be what works for communities, what do we hear, what can we afford? All of those questions come into play. And then we would develop a scenario, which Number Four is what we tried to do with that, but we did add in Hyperloop. And so my, my, my thought on this is that Hyperloop, we still have to think about whether or not we would add that as a, an actual project. It is private sector funded, so it is anticipated that it would not be publicly funded. And the private sector, if they are, at this point, willing to say that they will pay for it, we may put it in. We still haven't decided on that. If things are still uncertain, because even the technology is not quite there, we may put it as an illustrative example, just like we did with public transit last time. And so say, yes, we're interested in Hyperloop. We're serious about it, but we're going to put it here as illustrative visionary. It will not be in the actual plan. Maybe four years, eight years, because we update this every four years. For eight years, perhaps when we have more information and there's more commitment, we can amend it to the plan and actually add it in there. And so, you know, looking at those things, we would pick, in maintain, the PCRs are 80 as opposed to 75, which is what we kind of have as our goal now. We more likely than not will say, in the best scenario, we'd love to have 80. Can we afford it? I don't know. Is that what our priorities? Most likely, it will not be any lower than 75, which then gets you into Scenario Two at a 75 plus a few other things. We have about eight interchanges that we are looking at right now. Some of them are justified based on the traffic analysis right now. I want to say half of them maybe are, and the other half not yet. So the other half may end up going into the, sort of the futuristic or that visionary part of it, saying that they're not ready for addition into the long-range plan now. Some of them will be able to go in there. And then same with transit. More likely than not, we will not be able to afford that rail system. I don't have a commitment from any of the counties where the rail system would be going in, that they're willing to tax themselves at that level in order to afford that. So that visionary plan might not come to fruition, but maybe there's pieces of it that we can take out, like the automated shuttles, that could take people from the end of rail stations to different kinds of employment. For example, one of the things that we have thought of relative to autonomous shuttles, looking at job centers, and that's another thing I know that was important in your discussion. In the scenarios that we focused on, when we focus on job hubs or job centers, we have many of them in the region, but they're divided up into two tiers. So we have major job hubs and minor job hubs. Some people call them regional job hubs and subregional job hubs. Essentially, those job hubs are determined by the density of jobs in a certain location, as well as the, so it's the density of jobs as well as the percentage of workers that come from different parts of the region. So when you look at how that's defined, the density and the number of workers coming from the five county region into a job hub makes it major or minor. It is, at this point, the six major job hubs happen to be in Cuyahoga County. And I know, again, this is something that you all talked about at your last meeting. I can assure you, we did not create job hubs to put them in Cuyahoga County. They were already there, and they also, over the last five decades, have moved. It was predominantly downtown, at one point, downtown Cleveland. That has dispersed in many areas throughout Cuyahoga County and even into the collar counties. So when we look at that, those are the major job hubs. In Scenario Three, where we had an increase in population and an increase in jobs, that was attributed to rail. And so therefore, if it's attributed to rail, and there's a significant amount of rail that are, that is in Cuyahoga County, as had been requested by Cuyahoga for us to study, there are some, again, in the other counties, but the majority of it being in Cuyahoga, it becomes natural that the jobs then would gravitate towards that, and the population would gravitate toward that in that scenario. But I assure you, what's also there in all of the scenarios, including Three and Four, are the Tier Two or the minor job hubs that are included in each of the counties. So in Medina County, you have three job hubs. And we have worked on classifying these over the last couple of years. We've worked with Bethany Dentler's office to help us identify those densities, and also looking at where the future growth might be, and trying to say that we want to be supportive of what the counties are doing. So if the counties have these job hubs in their county, and they're trying to grow those, then we want to be supportive of that. We don't want to propose something totally new, or we're going to try and say that, you know, let's all work together to make sure what those investments should look like. So there is, there are three in Medina County. And when we talk about the rail system, for example, in Scenario Three, the rail does go down to connect to one of those job hubs in Medina County. And so anyway, that's kind of what we were doing. And understand that at this point, it is still exploratory. So we're trying to put information out, get reactions to that, engage people, have them show us what they want, and we try to map that out and take a look at it. But ultimately, our objective is to develop a regional transportation plan that supports the entire region. And not every transportation solution is going to work for every part of the region. So some counties may have no public transit other than the rural component like Geogee County. Others may have a very robust transit system like Cuyahoga County. In Lorraine County, they don't have currently a robust transit system, but they would like one. They've tried to put a couple of levies out there. They have not passed yet, but they still want one. So that also might be something we put into a illustrative or regional and say, when you have that levy passed, then we will move it and adopt it into the long-range plan. So again, we're trying to make things so that all parts of the region can thrive, all parts of the region have a planned system, and that we're being responsive to the folks. Now, we also know that there are some decisions that have to be made at some point that speak to what is best for the region. And that's something that our board has to decide what that looks like. So that isn't something staff decides. We provide the information, and we say, we think this is what people are suggesting they want. This is what we think it would cost. This is how it would impact things. And what, you know, what makes something regional? What is a regionally significant project? And what is something that we think all of the counties can support? I think the major project that we have, the major regional asset that we probably have that everybody can agree on, or at least close to everybody can agree on it, is the airport. Cleveland-Hopkins International Airport is a transportation asset that is regional, truly regional. Every county can benefit from that, both from the perspective of travel, personal travel, as well as freight. So there is some value to that. And if we were to invest dollars, which we are currently looking at as part of the city of Cleveland's master plan, we are looking at, they are looking at, with us and with ODOT, some reconfiguration of I-71. And so if there's a reconfiguration of I-71 to give you direct access from the south into the airport, as well as having to better utilize 237 and 480 for their own travel and not sort of encumber that for the airport, that's probably something that we will say everybody benefits from, and it's a regional project. Another example of a regional project is Irish Town Bend. So Irish Town Bend is a project that we are working on with the Cleveland-Cuyahoga County Port Authority. We were able to get funding from the federal government, close to $10 million, to support that project, which is about a $40 million project total. And that project is restoring the Cuyahoga River's bulkheads, essentially to keep it from collapsing, because if it collapses and the ships can't get through, you saw what just happened in the Suez Canal. Something like that could possibly happen in the Cuyahoga. And if that happens, we have $3.5 billion worth of economic activity that comes to a grinding halt. And that economic activity is not constrained to Cuyahoga County. It's the entire region. And in fact, when Adam Frederick, one of your former county commissioners, was NOACA president, he went to Washington with me to advocate for that additional funding from the feds for that, and recognized that, he was, I believe, a plant manager for a, an industrial company out in Lorraine County. He acknowledged that he's got shipments coming in and shipments going out, so they need iron ore to come in to make steel for the goods, and also recognized that a lot of the product that comes out of Medina County's light manufacturing industry goes out and comes in that way, too. So again, recognizing that that's a regional asset. So we try to identify those regional assets, say this is what we need to, as priority to strengthen the region's economy, and then also identify what it is that each of the counties need, and then supporting, supporting them in those efforts. So I think hopefully that will, now turn that over to you for questions.
Yes, thank you, Grace. So the, the presentation that was distributed and we all looked at was called the Long-Range Plan Scenario Evaluation.
Mm-hmm.
So that is a step in the process.
Correct.
And so at this point in time, NOACA is still collecting feedback from the community.
That is correct. Right. We do not have a proposed plan yet. The plan does not exist. We are currently still evaluating all of the information. We have integrated this time a little bit more explicitly things like land use, housing, economic development, and environment. And so those portions of it, we're kind of working on as well. So yes, you will not see a, a draft plan for the board's review until, I believe, the May Executive Committee meeting. So prior to that meeting, we would send out a draft plan.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, actually, have a ton, but that, let me get down to, I think we're going to need more time. Obviously, I've got, I've got a ton of questions. Of course, I'm newest to this process. I wasn't around last year, other than observing from, you know, 120 miles south, and other, other things on my mind, but being aware that there's some significant changes going on. We are in the middle of a historic pandemic. There is no doubt. And our international economy, our national economic structure has fundamentally altered, our social interactions, our business practices, even, even workforce development is totally different now and projected than what we had pre-COVID. The problem I have with this is, you know, you're talking about a lot of the journey to work portion of it. Well, all the studies are showing since COVID, those numbers have dropped significantly. We know commuter patterns have changed. The options people have to work at home versus work in the office, that communication Zoom that we have all depended upon, has changed the demands, not only of transportation, but significantly transit. And many of those that are actually returning to work are not preferring transit for various reasons. And so, all the data and all the planning we're doing is premised on, I'll just say, maybe mid-COVID proportions of it. I know you did some surveys based upon our, that one workshop, but we also have a lot of pre-COVID. Why were such a hurry to go ahead and then approve this? Now, before, number one, we have a real appreciation of what these fundamental changes look like and will look like in the future. All the futurists are looking at, say, this remote work is here to stay. The definition of an employee is going to continue to evolve, whether you work at home or whether you work in the city. And of course, we know there's tax consequences to that, and the legislature is going to continue to work with that. Like, what are you going to do if really you kind of report to an office, but you never work there? So should you pay us an income tax? Those issues are going to be wrangled out. That has a significant impact on your job hubs. Let's face it. It will.
Yep.
So, so we're, and we've got a number of scenarios. I mean, I would challenge some of the, what you provided. The one most egregious was, it doesn't go down 71, it goes down 42. So if you look at the map, I've got it up in front of me, it actually parallels 71. Once you get, once you get basically south of Brook Park and over to the Turnpike, it deviates from the Turnpike all the way down 42.
Steve, what are you referring?
This is the rail. And so, and I was on that transit call when they said, you know, drop the rail. This is problematic because of, I mean, the higher investment. And that was RTA telling you that. So this input's like, okay, and I understand that, you know, maybe it might look nice to look, say, hey, we're going to involve you, we're going to take a rail. It's not going to happen. It's just, I'm a rail historian. I can tell you, it's not, we're not going to relive the age of 100 years ago when it comes to transit, transportation, particularly rail. But all these changes, what does the timeframe need to be that we would need to do this? And the other component, other than the fundamental changes going on, is the census data is not even out. It's been backed up six months. That's the data we really ought to be looking at.
Yep.
Because that was, a lot of that was done over the last year, year and a half during COVID. And if we don't take that into consideration, I can't even, I can't even tell you how much of a fallacy that would be in any kind of plan we adopt. Because we know the plan will drive investment, correct? And the investment decision is not only in the public sector, but the private sector as well. And my fear is, premised on old data, we'll just say that data that's no longer valid and create, and based on the number of assumptions, we're just headed for a fool's paradise. And, but like I said, I've got a lot of other individual questions. I've looked at the, what was it? Oh, Morpsy, as well as Code is planned down in Columbus. I've kind of been more, you know, how they're involved, their process. They do a lot of land use components of that, as you know, being a planning commission for that, and the interactions and so forth. So they're a bit more detailed. But what I've found that they've been able to do is in their plan, they have included the visions of all these communities in their plan. When they've started building their transport, long-range transportation, they actually included the land use plans, they included all this information as part of that database, and they looked at along these corridors. My question, and we can go into detail, is did we include the dreams and the aspirations of the five counties? Maybe Cuyahoga, okay, but I'm not sure, and I don't see that. What we've done, I think, in a plan, the perception I have is we've not assimilated these aspirations for long-range transportation in those counties. We've actually eliminated them. And I would seek, and I know it would probably take a lot more time than we have, certainly today, or in the future, but I would suggest that maybe you're going to have to rethink this and go back out to the various stakeholders in the counties and see if, you know, see what we can do, especially as the data is starting to be updated.
Yeah, so if I may address that, first of all, you're absolutely right that the census data is not here, and it would be a much more accurate plan if we had that census data available. Also acknowledging that we began this plan, the development of the plan, prior to the pandemic, and we have seen transportation use, both public transit as well as automobile decline. VMTs are down 33% since the beginning of the pandemic, although today-
Vehicle miles traveled.
Vehicle miles traveled, thank you. Although my drive down here today from Shaker Heights shows me that I think people are back out on the road. Also with public transit, yes, there was substantial decline in public transit activity, specifically because the CDC, Center for Disease Control of the US government, told people not to use public transit during the pandemic. It was not advised. So yes, you absolutely see those components. The issue here is, we have no choice but to develop this plan and adopt it by June of this year. So that is a federal requirement. We don't have latitude to do anything different. However, there are two aspects of this that we can modify. One is, we do allow changes to the long-range plan every single quarter, so we can certainly look to see how we can amend it based on those. We also have a major update every four years. So there's the opportunity for us to start preparing for that next major update. So it's not as if this is a creation of a brand-new plan out of nowhere. This is the same plan from 1968. It just continually gets updated, and it gets updated in a way that becomes more relevant. What have we accomplished, what we haven't, what's changed? And so we move forward. So there is some necessity to update that plan with both of those issues when we see how things have changed with COVID. And we also see, for example, a company like Sherwin-Williams, who has said, despite the fact that COVID has had remote work, we will continue to press forward with both our headquarters in Cleveland and our research facility in Brexville, because we believe that working in person is what we want as our corporate culture. So it's going to depend on company to company, and so that's going to remain to be seen, and we'll need to watch that and then certainly add that into the development of any kind of amendments to the long-range plan. When it comes to the RTA, I mean, I will say that, and the visions are the dreams of all of the counties, we thought that we did include that. I mean, I recognize that you're new to this plan, and that is what we try to do, and it's not that we do it in every single turn, because a lot of it is already inherent in there. For example, the hopes and dreams of Medina County relative to its job hubs, we have worked with Medina County, and we hope we have captured that. If we have not, then we need to amend that and make sure that we do capture that. When it comes to things like population or growth, we've worked with Medina County relative to the FPA boundaries, recognizing that there's going to be development and growth in Medina County and where it will be located, and we've used that information in the development of the plan. I think some of the things that you have to realize is, in scenario planning, a lot of it is high level. We're not getting into specific projects to that. I mean, there are projects in there, but not to the level of detail. You know, when we talk about the rail going down I-71 or versus 42, I'd have to look because that just might be a line on the map that looks closer to 42. But the idea, the idea, again, this is illustrative more so than it is, these are not alternatives analyses, they are not even very much concept-based. This is very, very, very early planning. And so the idea is to take what was in that 1968 plan, which was following I-71 down, and to make that part of a plan. And when it comes to, again, the hopes and dreams of each of the counties, Geogee County told us they didn't want transit. We didn't include that. Cuyahoga County said, let's take a look at a more robust system to meet that 1968 requirement. But then, if there isn't funding for it, it isn't going to happen. I mean, it's just going to go into illustrative. And what we're trying to do with these scenarios is just be responsive to all kinds of questions. In prior years, when we only had one scenario and we didn't include things like public transit, we were, you know, we were criticized by all the public transit people and those that wanted in the other counties, saying, why are you always looking at the automobile? Why aren't you looking at public transit? So the idea here is, we look at all of it, and then we see what makes sense, what's realistic, what's affordable. And again, none of this is something that can't be amended or altered as more information comes in and as more of the people who are looking for change can demonstrate that that change is in fact supported.
So Grace, in May, the actual plan itself will be presented-
Correct.
-in an update, so we can circulate that. You have our feedback-
Yes.
...now, from our communities and stakeholders here in Medina County. Will that influence the plan?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. That is the entire reason to have created the scenarios and to get the feedback, is because ultimately, I don't think any of those scenarios in each of their entities will be a scenario that works for, based on what we're hearing. We thought maybe total would be it, but it may not be it. So we may end up coming up with a scenario that, again, the scenarios are for planning purposes. Once we actually develop the plan, it will be the plan. And the component that will be the plan, when it comes to those different aspects of information that's included, most likely will include different aspects of each of those four in the actual plan. So that would be the idea.
Grace, aren't we, we're obligated to update the current plan as the AIM 2040, correct?
Correct.
Which was adopted when Adam Frederick actually was president-
Which is why it's called-
...in 2017.
Him being a hunter, which is why we called it AIM 2040.
Little anecdotal stuff, okay. So we just, we're obligated to update it, but we're not obligated, as to what is included in that update, is really up to us, correct? It's up to the board to determine whether we want to do this scenario fishing and just kind of go like that, or do we just want to take a look at that 10-year transition based upon what we know or what we kind of knew the last couple of years and include that, knowing that we still have another next four or five years we can update, but there's some of these other things that would need much more time to define. I mean, the passenger rail study that was done in 2007, I didn't see reference to this at all. And I know there was a lot of money spent, and that was, of course, before your term-
I'm sorry, which study is this?
The passenger rail study.
From where to where?
Well, it actually looked at the viability of routes even into Medina, use the current rail lines. The most promising lines were actually out to Lorain. But at that time, Congressman Kucinich blocked a passenger rail service go out there, and that was thought to be the most viable. So that was, of course, during the, well, Strickland was the governor at that point in time, and they were looking at the CCC, but they also were looking at passenger rail. NOAC spent a lot of money and time, everybody did. We had sessions out here in Medina County. So I don't even see reference to that when you looked at rail. And so that, like I said, there's a lot of questions I have in the development of this that causes me to say, okay, why are we confusing with the scenarios when we just ought to do a simple update, given the data we have, knowing that there's some additional data coming very quickly, that we then really ought to be concentrated on, number one, the next update. Number two, we have a $3 trillion to $4 trillion transportation bill coming in from Congress, and I think we're going to have unprecedented, historical investment available in transportation. And if we're not ready to use that money wisely, I don't want to see it going down a whole boondoggle that some might suggest a Hyperloop might be. So I mean, I know that we're kind of in preparation, and it's going to be all private sector, but like I said, there's no proven technology quite yet. We might as well put transporters from starships in outer space while we're at it.
Yeah, I completely agree with Steve. It's disappointing that we have to kind of solidify this plan by June, because there is so many things in the very near future coming down, more information that we will get, and there are so many things that for the foreseeable future will have changed forever. I know you talked about Sherwin-Williams, but there's many, many companies who have not decided the configuration of how their workplace will be, and they're not going to decide in 2021. And how, with the Hyperloop scenarios, how realistic is the private funding for the Hyperloop scenarios, or are we just talking pipe dream kind of scenarios?
It's very realistic, but again, what we're saying is, we will not include it unless it is privately funded. So we have no interest in including it in the plan unless it's privately funded. But right now, as we had been working with the prior administration, I'm not really sure where this current administration stands on the Hyperloop, but we had been working for the last three years with the prior administration, who was very, very much supportive and pushing Hyperloop as a public-private partnership. And so we were working with that assumption that USDOT, in fact, they formed a special committee to review and to advance all of the technology and the deployment of Hyperloop, looking at it as the new generation of high-speed rail. And so again, if the new Biden administration changes their perspective on that and dismantles all of the Hyperloop, the Net Council, and dismantles any of support for it financially and otherwise, then that would be the direction we would take. So we are not driving this. It's the USDOT, Washington, as well as the private developers that are driving that.
So Grace, again, we're going to get a draft plan coming up here in the next almost month, six weeks or so, and we'll have the opportunity to review that, and I guess then it'll go to the full NOAC board for approval.
Correct. And remembering that this is an update, and, you know, although we can, you know, Commissioner Heimlich, the one point that I will make, though, is although the NOAC board gets to decide how they want to update it, the federal government does have a substantial amount of guidelines and regulatory, things that we have to meet in order to determine a long-range plan. One of them is a very in-depth exploration of public transit. We are obligated to do that because NOAC is funding, a third of NOAC's funding for planning comes from the Federal Transit Administration. And when we get our quadrennial review, it's not just federal highway. It's both federal highway and federal transit. And both of them also want scenario planning and want us to sort of talk to the public about their different things that they would want. And then we kind of get into the realism, but, so we are following the process. It's unfortunate that COVID happened in the middle of it, because that does change a lot of things. But on the other hand, it is one of the reasons that these plans do get updated, and we have the ability then to include better information. So we will be coming back. And if the board, if the NOAC board wants, I mean, one of the things that I foresee, and I can't say it's completely set yet, because I am still gathering input from folks like yourselves in the other counties, more likely than not, it will not be a substantial update in the plan for the projects, but rather, they'll be illustrative. And it will probably, we will probably recommend, rather than a four-year update the next time, which is what the requirement is, maybe in one year or two years, once we have the census and once we have additional information on the COVID, we can do an update to the plan without scenarios, but just saying, this is what we've adopted, and let's update it for the information we now have to better represent what that might mean.
And you mentioned that we can update it every quarter or every six months?
We currently have updates to the plan every quarter. And they're usually projects. So for example, if in fact the private sector came to us tomorrow and said, we now have the technology for Hyperloop, and the federal government supports the regulatory, because that's what the feds are in for, they're not in for the financials, it's the regulatory, they're supporting the regulatory, and we've got the technology and we're going to fund it, NOAC, we need you to update your long-range plan, yes, in one quarter. It normally takes two quarters, we do it every quarter, but by the time the projects get through, it's a little bit longer. So between three to six months, we could add that in, so they could move forward to it if that was reasonable. The same with all of the other projects, like the airport. Any change to I-71 isn't in there, because it still has to be studied. And then when it's studied, and if it's determined to be a viable project, they would come to NOAC. Well, we would be along for that entire study, but then it would need to be approved by NOAC once the alternatives were presented, and then NOAC board would select an alternative.
But if this $3 trillion infrastructure bill is approved, we may have to update the plan much quicker.
And with more than just projects, update the plan.
You know, there's a little bit, yes, maybe, we don't really know a lot of what comes out of the trillion, the $3 trillion plan. Right now, we are being asked, just I'm sure many of you are, what are your earmarks that you would like out of that plan? And so those will all be included in there, and those are being done at a very localized level. So I think that will be a substantial portion of it. What we're being asked to give now isn't quite, it doesn't quite make sense, so we're not sure how this will be deployed. For example, what we're being asked is to give them projects that are currently included in our tip for earmarks. But if it's in the tip, it already has funding. You cannot be in the federal tip without funding. So if you're asking me to give you projects that are in my tip, I already have funding for them. Those are not the ones I need funding for. I need funding for projects that are in the plan, that are not yet funded. And that's another reason why, despite the fact that we may want to be cautious in the development of a plan, we also want to be aggressive enough to have projects that we could actually put into fruition once those funds come. Again, looking at more regional kinds of projects, or even more localized ones that are agreeable to everyone, as we're looking at how to advance it. So that, the $3 trillion plan is going to include the five-year regular transportation bill, and that current transportation bill that exists is only about two-thirds funded. So it's only been funded by the Highway Trust Fund for two-thirds. The other third of it's been in the general fund. So when you talk about $3 trillion, and you look at what the revenues are, what the expenditures are, and then you look at all the earmarks that will be coming off the top, I'm not sure that there's as much, as much there that, you know, it'll remain to be seen where-
There's discretionary funds that we can do other projects with.
Right.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? We do need to get moving on here, but-
Well, just a comment, and maybe this is more from a messaging standpoint, and we've talked about this. You know, when you look at scenarios three and four particularly, it feels so centric on Cuyahoga County. And I know you and I have talked, and, you know, there is more underlying growth that's happening in the other regions, but the presentations aren't showing that. And so it creates a reaction like, you know, the other counties are not being impacted or taken into consideration, particularly in scenarios three and four.
Yeah.
I think, you know, that data needs to be presented maybe in a different way, so we could get a more complete understanding, because, you know, the way it looks right now, you know, it feels like, you know, everything is being directed towards those job hubs in Cuyahoga County. And as I shared with you earlier, you know, from an economic developer standpoint, our businesses have a hard enough time finding people. I don't need more resources- I don't need more resources being directed to driving those people out of Medina County to into another county when we have plenty of work here for them to do.
Yeah, and again, scenario three is based on the Ohio Development, Ohio Department of Developments numbers for population and job growth, just like scenarios one and two. They have an incremental increase in population and job growth as a result of the transit scenario that is predominantly reflective of the 1968 plan. So it does have growth in that. And yes, the majority of that incremental growth is in Cuyahoga County because that's where the transit system is. When we, if we do not move forward with that system, Cuyahoga County and those job growth, it will not exist. I mean, those are, and same with the Hyperloop. Once we take the Hyperloop out of scenario four, that job growth and that population growth will disappear. I mean, there's a 10% increase in population and job growth as a result of both the Hyperloop and the transit between the two scenarios. I think it's 3%, maybe 7%, which gets you to 10 in that last scenario. If we take those out, which is likely because we don't have enough information or funding commitments to make it happen, we will go back to the Ohio Department of Developments numbers, which are exactly as you say, which is in scenario one and two. They're also the baseline for three and four. The incremental are related to those areas of growth. Another way to look at this, too, you know, when we look at the four scenarios, if I were only to have had car scenarios, scenario one and two, and not three or four, I would have been criticized by Cuyahoga County, by Lorraine County, by all of the transit advocates that would say, you haven't even considered transit. Not to mention the fact that the FTA would probably not certify me the next time around when they do their quadrennial review, because they're going to say, you didn't look at public transit, and so we're not going to certify you as the MPO anymore because you're not doing your job. So the scenarios are just to make sure we're looking at everything and understanding. If we don't put a public transit plan out there that is representative of the 1968 plan, why? What's the reason? Well, the reason would be funding, or the reason would be this, or the reason would be that, doesn't have enough support, you know, and so that's just kind of what we're trying to do. But we appreciate, and we've always appreciated the opportunity to work closely with Bethany and her team to try and understand what you're working on relative to workforce development. We've come down here and made presentations at her directive to the Chamber of Commerce in Medina. You know, we're working with all of the different communities. You know, another, I see Paul here from Brunswick, you know, you're talking about the interchange scenarios. Well, scenario two has interchanges in it, but I was just told very definitively by the Brunswick City Council that they do not want that interchange. And so if they do not want that interchange.
It was very definitive.
Very definitive.
This city council, there are some new members that are, some members leaving, so I guess we wait and see.
So, but the point is, we're not going to put in an interchange, despite the fact that a lot of people want that interchange. I've got a lot of folks at the state level calling about that interchange, but if the local doesn't want it, we're not going to force that interchange into that plan. And certainly if three years from now or four years from now, there is a total turnover and there's a new consensus on building it, we'll amend the plan and we'll put it in.
Right. Just one thing, just going back to some of the topics we talked about with about the growth and what the job sector and population and being obligated to look at transit, and I can understand and appreciate that, but I think we need to base it on sound information. And I think just building transit facilities is not going to get people to move there. There's other social and economic factors that need to be taken into account. So just saying, well, we have new transit facilities, that's going to draw all of these people. I think there's large, there needs to be large considerations for the other factors of why for the past 40 years, people have been moving out of their urban areas. And I think you can show that in the transit study and fulfill your obligation without painting a rosy picture than maybe what actually exists.
And yeah, I mean.
But I think we're glossing over that.
Well, you know, when you get into planning, there's a lot of different opinions, and there's a lot of different studies. And, you know, for every study that you can find, one that says transit does not attract passengers, I'll find you three more that says, if you build it, they will come. So there's, you know, and again, we're going, using all of the industry tools to help get us there. But the point I want to depart with the most, sort of to your point, is scenario one and scenario two are the scenarios that support Medina County in its growth as it has been trending over the last 50 years. So that, it's not excluded. None of these scenarios, so all of that in scenario, even in scenario three, which is transit, that's still there. It's not that it's not there, it's that transit is on top of it. And so from our perspective, we think that we've covered everything, and it's just a matter of what becomes fiscally able and regionally acceptable. And so really, you're looking at all of those things. And the other thing I will mention about the $3 trillion plan that is coming out from Washington, I guarantee you, it will be highly, highly funding public transit. There will be a huge piece of it to public transit. So if in fact we don't want public transit and we don't put it in our plan, that's okay. But if we do want it and there's an opportunity to fund it, that might also make sense. So just trying to make sure that we're thinking about everything and how wide open it can be.
I would be the last one to suggest that we shouldn't be, in fact, fund transit. I was on the General Assembly when we added amongst the caucus to push for additional funding, as we did last General Assembly, and also the gas tax, that helped everybody on that. And so I absolutely agree. In 2017, when you had the AIM 2040, it did have transit in there. It didn't have the various scenarios, but it still got, did it not get the federal accreditation, certification for that?
But it's that same scenario that's in scenario three, we just broke it out. So the one that was in the AIM 40, 2040, is scenario three. It's the same one, we've just called it now scenario three.
You're talking about with the rail scenario?
Yes.
In the 20, okay, I'll have to take a look at that.
I mean, I think Ali, who's our modeler, has said there's been some changes and some adjustments to the AIM 41, but it is essentially, you know, and I don't want to give a percentage, but it's essentially the same thing, which again builds on the 1968 plan.
Yes, it does beg, I guess beg the issue is, why Columbus is growing by hundreds of thousands of people over the next decade or two, and we're still, if you will, atrophying and not. And there's a lot of, I mean, a lot of benefits here, it's not like they don't get snow, and they don't get winter. They do, maybe a little bit milder, but they do. And their ability to be able to also be certified, develop a plan, doesn't, they don't have rail, so they don't have that issue of extension of those kind of fixed assets, but they're able to very adeptly, with their transit system, meet the needs of a huge region. I'm very much impressed by, you know, their future, they've got their plan, which is just awesome, I mean, and what they've forecasted. But they also don't have this whole idea of job hubs. They have corridors that they look to emphasize. And so that's the, for me, the real question comes down to is, we have an opportunity corridor that was funded and continues to receive funding and so forth. Why that, if you will, concept is obviously more fully utilized for the scenarios rather than this kind of job hub and then using transit to funnel everybody into a job location.
Yeah, and again, each scenario is different and reflects a different aspect of that. So I think that what you're talking about is reflected in one and two. But with the corridors, we would like nothing more as planners to plan along corridors. Unfortunately, we didn't create the job hubs, they created themselves, and the free market is what we acknowledge in this country, that we allow the free economy to sort of drive those things. And so those six job hubs, which are not on corridors, were created, and so now we would be either, we'd have to move them to corridors that exist, which I don't think is practical or, you know, really supportive of our values. And so how do you service them where they are now, is kind of what we're trying to do. And, you know, I appreciate all the comments, and I think this is great, and we'll continue to take them under consideration for the finishing of this plan, but then always reminding you that it is a, it is a living, breathing document. So we can certainly sit down with you, Commissioner Hamley, because I know you have both a tremendous history of NOAACA and a history of rail, as you said, and you've got the experience at the state level. We would love to be able to sit down with you now that you are back in this position at the local level to talk about how we can improve the development of that long-range plan. And if it means an update in a year from now or two years from now, as opposed to the full four years, I think that would be good. I think that's fine. I think we just, we are stuck with both COVID in the middle of this, and then we were trying to better serve our constituency by describing different types of opportunities that exist. And I think maybe I want to clarify, too, like in some scenario planning, like the one that we did for Vibrant Neo, they came up with four scenarios and essentially picked one. That isn't what we're trying to do. The scenarios are intended to showcase what could happen or what would happen if you focused on these kinds of things, or if you layered something else in.
Okay. So when I invited Grace here, we talked about a 20-minute time frame.
We did.
We already had an hour. But Shannon, did you have one last comment?
I'll go first.
Okay. So Grace, thank you very much for coming.
Sure.
I very much appreciate it. This is a regional plan encompassing five counties, and I think from Medina County standpoint, we just want to make sure that NOAACA appreciates where we're coming from and can give consideration to our concerns.
We absolutely are appreciative of it. We're grateful that you've taken the time to read through those, to understand them, and to give us those comments that will help us develop that plan that we presented today. So we're very, and, you know, we here, as I heard Paul's counsel a week or 10 days ago, we want to make sure that our plans reflect what you want. There is no, there is no attempt to try and put anything else that anybody else wants in there, except for what the community themselves want.
All right. Thank you, Grace. Thank you very much for coming down today.
My pleasure, nice to meet you as well. Good to see you again. Welcome back.
And you're welcome to take a rest of the meeting if you'd like, or not.
I'm going to pass on that one, but thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Grace. We very much appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, Rhonda, you're coming in. Steve, could I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, move to approve the minutes of March 23rd?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Swettin? Hudson?
Yes. And we'll move right into resolutions. Andy Conrad, our county engineer, you're up.
Is it still morning? Good morning, good afternoon. I have three resolutions for you this morning. The first is resolution accepting and awarding the 2021 replacement of bridge number 15 on the Eastern Road in Wadsworth Township. Second resolution is funding the, or finding the public convenience and welfare requires the resurfacing of Wilbur Road from State Route 94 to a location approximately 2,500 feet west in Granger Township. And the third resolution is determining the necessity to close Black River School Road between Camp Road and Spencer Road.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Swettin? Hudson?
Yes.
And the weekly permit list is there for you.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it. Good to see you in person.
Yeah.
Next up, we have Amy Lyon-Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. I have eight resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first resolution is amending the appropriation measure. The second resolution is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. The fourth resolution is sales tax distribution to the various districts located in Medina County. The fifth resolution is awarding the bid for the Medina County Monopole Steel Tower and Antenna. This is to enhance Harris radio coverage in Hinkley Township and surrounding areas for the Medina County Sheriff, and that is being awarded to Spielman Electric Incorporated for a contract price of $117,867. The sixth resolution is approving the Medina County ODOT cooperative agreement for the State Route 18 project. The seventh resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. This is for six participants from the Juvenile Detention Center and some local training. And the eighth resolution is the claims for the week against the county in the amount of $705,509.43.
Move to approve the eight resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Glad our sales taxes stayed stable, because it's nice to see those checks and.
Yes. First thing I can remember, that's actually been over $4 million.
For the schools?
That are distributing to the schools.
Yeah, for the schools on a quarterly basis.
Yes.
Right. Now, we get an update from the tax department that gets sent out to us, does that get sent out to them, too, to let them know how that's tracking?
That's a great question, and I don't know the answer to that.
I know we get it.
I'm sure when they see their checks.
That's the CCO.
So can we just forward that, just as a courtesy, just to school, to, yeah, the SC, or the Treasurers? That way they know, obviously, it's, you know, I'm not sure it impacts their spending considering what their total budgets are, but still, it's good to know that they can see some of that money coming in.
Yes.
In terms of cash. All right, great, thanks.
Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Swettin? Hudson?
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Next up, we have Holly Murin, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning, I have two resolutions for you today. On our personal changes resolution, we have one new hire in transit, four promotions in sanitary, six rate increases, one in maintenance, three in sanitary, and two at job and family services. We have a return from leave at Building Department, a termination in Building Department, and a retirement in sanitary. Second resolution is approving the three-year collective bargaining agreement between Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities and the Medina County Achievement Center Employees Association, OEA, NEA.
I'll move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Swettin? Hudson?
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next up, we have Scott Miller, our County Administrator. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. I have five resolutions for you today. The first resolution is authorizing the sanitary engineer to commence advertising for construction bids. This is to install additional pumps at the North Pump Station in Sharon Township. The next resolution, as you know, the Ohio EPA has awarded Medina County up to $150,000 in grant money. This is for the replacement of residential septic systems to qualifying low to moderate income households. This resolution is authorizing sanitary engineer to commence advertising for bids, and this is the replacement of these systems. The next resolution is declaring it necessary to replace an existing water main and sanitary sooner laterals located in Chippewa Lake Village, and authorizing a sanitary engineer to enter into an agreement with engineering associates. This is for the professional design services in amount not to exceed $4,310. The fourth resolution is approving the water improvement project, Medina Road. This is in cooperation with OWDA under the provisions and terms and conditions of the agreement attached, and authorizes the President of the Board to approve this agreement. The loan amount is, the max amount is $663,865. And the final resolution is authorizing a cooperative agreement between the County Medina and the Ohio Water Development Authority for the 8730 building renovation project at the Medina County Hollow Waste Management District with the OWDA max loan amount of
I'll move to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Swettin? Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Debbie Kylie. There she is. Good morning, Debbie.
Good morning. Just one resolution for your consideration. It's an agreement between the Medina County Child Support Enforcement Agency and the Medina County Domestic Relations Court for the enforcement of child support. This is for a period of time of January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions? Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Swettin? Hudson?
Yes. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Next up is Denise Testa, our Planning Services Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have one resolution for your consideration for a contract for administrative services for program year 21 for our chip program between our county and the Ohio Regional Development Corporation.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? Roll call?
Hamley?
Yes.
Swettin? Hudson?
Okay, thank you very much.
There she is. There she is. Next up, we have Kyle White from our OSU Extension Office, and you're up.
All right.
Good morning, Kyle.
Howdy.
Good morning.
How you guys doing?
Good.
Long time no see. Long time no see anybody, right? But I'm actually here, I have two colleagues that, Rachel Chapman, I would like to introduce. She is our 4H Program Assistant. And Rachel's going to be talking a little bit about a program she's been doing, I wanted to make sure you were aware of. At the same time, we have a brand-new 4H educator. So Sierra Baca has been hired at, to replace Morgan Democas. She started in February, and we are very proud to have her and Rachel working on this program. We couldn't have two better people. So Rachel, do you want to talk a little bit about CARTEANS?
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for that introduction. So like she said, my name's Rachel Chapman, and I am our Program Assistant, and I work primarily with our 4H program. And I'm here today to talk to you about our CARTEENS program. So I don't know if any of you are familiar with, with CARTEENS at all. Okay, that's fine. So I brought some, some papers there, a little flyer I put together, just kind of tell you a little bit about the program, and then, so what it is, is a juvenile traffic safety program that focuses on first-time traffic offenders within Medina County. So this is a statewide program. It was started in 19, yeah, 1987, and it has expanded to cover all across the state. So the reason that we do this program is because traffic accidents are the number-one cause of death for teenagers between the ages of 15 and 19. A person who is 20 years old has a significantly reduced chance of dying in a car accident compared to someone who is younger. So it is a big concern all across the, the nation, not just here in Medina County. But one of the ways that we are trying to address this problem is by teaching this CARTEENS program. So what, what happens in the program is the court, so we have, we have a partnership with our Medina County Juvenile Court System, with the State Highway Patrol System, and again, with, with us in 4H. And so the juvenile court recommends students to our class who are first-time traffic offenders. And then they, they, it is a voluntary class, so they choose to sign up for that two-hour class to come in and learn more about the program. So CARTEENS is actually an acronym. It stands for Caution and Responsibility, and then TEENS refers to our teenage drivers and to the teen youth who volunteer with the program throughout the state. So the, so we focus a lot in this course on, on promoting caution, promoting like critical thinking when you're driving, and about the very important decisions that youth have to make when they're driving. Because as I point out to them in the class, you know, we make a lot of choices all throughout our daily lives, but when we're behind the wheel of a car, suddenly every choice that we make becomes extremely important. So we go over a lot of information in the course, again, just to kind of make sure that they, they know the right things to, to be doing on the road, and that they're following all of the traffic laws. But then we, what I think is really special about the class is that we focus a lot on the connections and on open discussion, and really getting kids to think about, not just, you know, what are the laws, but why are those laws there? So that they can understand the importance of the decisions that they're making when they're behind the wheel of a car, to protect themselves and the community at large. And I've been teaching this class since I took over this position in January of last year, and we've had some really positive results. We've had, you know, some big changes that we faced in the class because obviously COVID happened in the middle of there. So we've transitioned from doing an in-person class where there was a lot of like physical activities to an online class where we do a lot more group discussion and like thought-provoking exercises and things like that. We've received very positive feedback, which I mentioned some of that on your form there. Ninety-six percent of kids who complete the class can identify a positive safety change that they will make as a result of taking the class. Ninety-six percent say that they learned new information, and a third of the class say they learned a lot of new information. So, and then there's some testimonials too that you can read there of just things that, you know, kids have, have said on their surveys that I think really speak a lot to what we're doing in this class. So I'm really proud of the work that we're doing in our CARTEENS program, and I really want to thank you, the, the County Commissioners, for supporting the work that we do at OSU Extension. This is just one of the wonderful things that we're doing as part of our work. So thank you.
Pause. Go ahead. Is this part, do you have hands-on? This is primarily just classroom and of course Zoom, or do you get hands-on, like the driving over by the pad behind the Currier Center?
So this is not a, a driving-based course. I know there are some fantastic driving-based courses that they do also offer in Medina County. Like I said, this one is more, it is primarily over Zoom. Normally, we would have, you know, like physical activities that we do, and hopefully we'll get to do again soon.
Yes, that was my question. Because the Currier Center has that huge driving pad.
Yes.
And, and I know the juvenile appropriate court is involved with that program over there.
Yep.
Might be a nice way to integrate.
It'd be nice if we get teenagers who have never had a traffic incident to take it too. You don't even mean like a preemptive.
Yes. And that's definitely something that we've talked about and something we'd really would like to work on for the future.
I just wanted to add one thing that I think might really strike you guys. It struck me because I feel that, well, my understanding is, back in the old days when I took driving, it was pretty involved driver's ed. In fact, the girl that would have been the valedictorian of my class got a C in driver's ed, and she wasn't the valedictorian of the class. So she was an excellent student, but a rotten driver. But anyway, I wanted to share, one of the things that I learned when I first was understanding CARTEENS was that they were talking about things like tailgating, and talking about why you leave a certain number of car lengths between vehicles when you're driving, and what happens when you're texting and you're not paying attention. And I learned that a lot of kids, I was talking to the instructor that was the predecessor for Rachel, but I don't, I take my foot off the gas when someone's tailgating me, hoping they'll back off. And she said, if they don't see taillights, they're not paying attention, and they're wanting to do. So these are things they talk about in the class that the kids never thought of before. Like, hey, not everybody puts on their taillight when they just take their foot off the gas because they're failing. So these, these are things that the kids really appreciate hearing. So it's, it's very valuable information.
Yes. Yes. All right. Well, thank you, Rachel.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your time.
It was nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, and I just want to introduce myself. I'm Sierra. I'm the new 4H educator. We're working on 4H camps as much as we can do this year. We will provide something. We're not sure what it's going to be. And we're working on County Fair right now, so we're excited for that.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Thanks, Sierra. Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming in today. So we will move on to our Commissioner Resolutions. I have two resolutions.
Amy's going to read the term.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Do you remember you telling me that? Amy?
Are we ready?
Sure.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to read this with Jeremy out this week. So what I-
Good morning, David.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So what I have is a resolution commending David Bazilovich for his 30 years of service with Medina County. Whereas it has come to the attention of the Board of County Commissioners that David Bazilovich is retiring from the Medina County Sanitary Engineering Department on April 1st, 2021. And whereas Dave was hired on July 9th, 1990, as a wastewater treatment plant supervisor at the Kenneth W. Hoats Water Reclamation Facility, also known as the Liverpool Wastewater Treatment Plant, having previously obtained his Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 wastewater operator licenses, and subsequently achieved his Class 4 wastewater operator license in January of 2003. Dave also built upon his existing Class 1 water supply licensure by obtaining his Class 2 and Class 3 water supply licenses during his tenure with the county. And whereas Dave's experience, hard work, and dedication led to his promotion to be the Assistant Treatment Plant Superintendent of the Hinkley Wastewater Treatment Plant in April 1998, and advanced him eight months later into the role of Treatment Plant Superintendent of the Hinkley Wastewater Treatment Plant in December 1998. In 2011, Dave continued advancing his career by promoting into a newly-created Superintendent of Treatment position with responsibility and direct supervision over operations and the employees of the Water Division, and the Treatment Plant Superintendents of the Chippewa Wastewater Treatment Plant, Hinkley Wastewater Treatment Plant, and a Kenneth W. Hoats Water Reclamation Facility. And whereas Dave has consistently demonstrated highly effective leadership skills and ensured that all employees were treated fairly. As a trusted leader, Dave earned the respect of his staff and always led by example. He demonstrated a strength in employee development and cross-training to allow for continued professional growth and opportunities offered to others. He exemplified strong leadership in the design and completion of the $35 million Cost Efficiency Improvement Project at the Kenneth W. Hoats Water Reclamation Facility in 2019. He was also very cost-conscious and ensured that projects and operational expenditures stayed within their annual approved budgets. And whereas Dave has an unmatched understanding of the county's water and wastewater treatment facilities and the criticality of their operations, Dave's work within Medina County is greatly appreciated, and his presence will be missed by all of his coworkers and everyone who had the pleasure of working with Dave. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Dave for his commitment and diligent work during his career. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, that David Bazilovich be and is hereby commended for his 30 years of service with the Medina County Sanitary Engineering Department, and be it further resolved that this Board wishes to take the opportunity to offer best wishes to Dave for his retirement.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, David, and thank you for your, your service.
Always been wonderful.
Thirty years is a long time, and you know, when, when I've been out to the, the Kenneth Hoats Wastewater Treatment Plant and did the tour, and, and very much appreciated. And, and I, I really liked the, the digester and, and that whole project. It sounds like Jeremy gave us some figures, I think, last week or the week before, and it sounds like it's doing really well, so.
It is doing well. We anticipate doing better, you know, it's a learning curve for all the staff and as a group, you know, you know, they, they perform very well. So I think moving forward is going to be fantastic.
Yes, indeed.
I think all your hard work of 30 years kept you looking young. It had something to do with the, either, either that or you started when you were in high school.
I did.
Yeah, okay, well then.
Yeah, I mean, it was 1974.
Oh, my God.
As a treatment plant operator outside of the county.
Oh, my gosh.
Wow. Very good. Yeah. Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Swedden?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Dave.
And we have a certificate here for you.
Oh, I'll put my mask on.
We're hanging two headed an hour blank.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me get a photo.
All right. I was smiling. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
David, congratulations. Thank you. And we have one other resolution, reappointing and appointing members to the Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability. We are reappointing Jackie Smith, Bill Meyer, Linda Williams, and Marie Edmonds, and appointing Diana Madonna to a new term.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a roll call and second. Any questions?
Just thanking them for their services. All voluntary. This obviously helps the county quite a bit in terms of identifying programs and working with Laura Toth over there. So, as well as represent on the five-county advisory council.
Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Swedden?
Yes.
Yes. And we'll move on to our guest. We have Tom Jenkins and Hub Marcus up for the SBCA. It's kind of hard to recognize you all with your masks on.
Yeah, Tom always moves aside to let me, you know, come up here, but.
Well, I'm here to support.
But we, we came to thank you again very much for your support, the SBCA, and for the, for the monies. Since we moved down to Guilford Road, it has gone very well. Things are moving along, and your support is, is greatly appreciated. I think we've settled down to the point where the society is, is, I think, doing things the way they should be done. We have a very good person taking care of the day-to-day operations, and, and we can say, hopefully, spending, spending the money wisely. And so anyhow, we've, it, every year, the amount of animals continue to increase. We were up to about 1,700 total intake last year, and I can say that part of that was the city of Medina had a little house full of rats, which was about 300 of them. Between the SBCA and the city themselves, we were able to, to clear that out and get that, that taken care of. This lady was raising rats. And, and then the one other, I think, number would be the fact that over 1,000 cats, and I don't want to get into what I just went through with the, the city, but the, the cat population continues to be as it is, and, and we had that kind of turned over a few years ago, you know, when we, when we worked with the county on that. Anyhow, it's, it's going well. You know, we start out with a whole, you know, cat season starts, what, Tom, in like, probably May, and runs, you know, runs through probably October. And amazingly, you know, we could be up to 250, 300 cats in the facility at one time, and then by the end of the year, they're, they're, they're adopted out. And I just, I wonder every year, where in the world all these animals go, but they find good homes, and, and that's good. So.
So, Hub, your, your deal with, SBCA deals with domesticated cats?
Pretty much. Pretty much.
Is there any program for feral cats?
Tom said, watch out.
Just a question.
No. Basically, if we get a feral cat, if we can, if, let's put it, let me expand that to say a pregnant feral cat, we hope we can get it soon enough, because if you can get it soon enough, you can domesticate, you know, the kittens. The cat itself, no. You know, and so the, you know, the trap, neuter, and release, you know, program as, as it exists is very expensive. We, we have chosen not to be that. And when we, when we did the, the gas chamber many years ago, we said we really were not going to get into the, into that business, because it's just, it's just so hard to set up and try to, you know, financially responsible, try to, you know, to operate that, that program. Because first of all, it's trapping them, and that can, you can, you can set a trap, but, you know, you could catch anything. And it goes over and over till finally you get what you're trying to aim for, and then you've got to neuter them, and then releasing them is even more difficult, because the people don't want them back to where they were.
Right.
So it, I can't say that it is not a problem, because it, it is a problem in Medina County, but not a, I don't think it's a huge problem, but it, it does exist. And of course, you have a lot of people that, you know, just don't want to see any cat put down. And, and we understand that, but that's, you know, unfortunately, there's not much you can do with a, with a, an adult feral. So I'm not answering it probably as well.
Thank you.
I, I think that what, you know, that expands quickly into the deer problem. And well, you know, people get into that deer problem. It's, it's.
Yeah, Medina City is, is trying to work on that.
Oh, yes, they are. Yes, they are. I had 18. I should have taken a picture, but I had 18 in my backyard yesterday afternoon.
Yeah.
And enjoying the grass, thank goodness. Just the grass.
Yeah.
So.
At this time of year.
That's right. That's right.
I do have a question. You've got the-
Sure.
Time, just, as you know, well, House Bill 24, which is the bill I authored, was passed by the General Assembly and the, and signed by the governor in December, will be going in effect in April. One of the provisions of that does require the Humane Society to provide an annual enforcement report filed with the sheriff. I think it'd be helpful to the Board. I know, you're pretty sure you're going to be coming back at the end of the year, asking for additional funds next year, to potentially to, you know, take a look at that report and, and add all those other activities. I think it'd be helpful to the Commissioners to also. I think it'd be helpful to the board, I know you're pretty sure you're going to be coming back at the end of the year, asking for additional funds next year, to potentially to, you know, take a look at that report and add all those other activities. I think it'd be helpful to the commissioners to also have an understanding of that, what the humane officer, as well as, you know, the prosecution and all these other activities, aside from all the, if you will, all the rescues that you're getting. Would be very helpful for us in evaluating those requests.
Okay.
All right.
We'll take a... Could you forward me on to that?
House Bill, yeah, I'll send you the, I'll send you the enacted version and rolled, and if you have any questions, please, you know, give me...
Yeah, I mean, just...
There's a lot of nuances to it, additions, it's...
Aren't there always, right?
Yeah, but originally it was a three-page bill and after six years gained quite a bit, so...
No, I'd appreciate that. In that way, it would give our people a chance to, you know, at least that, you know, make sure they're collecting the right data.
Right, right. And you don't have an executive director now, do you?
We do not, and we basically have, you're aware, you know, we've tried. COVID kind of took care of that. So we will take a look at it when we feel that financially we can support something like that. So, and I don't know, well, we'll just have to wait and see what happens with that.
Be glad to pass the information on to you and answer any questions. As I said, help us whenever you make your funding request is the various activities.
Sure, appreciate that.
Which are not just the rescues, but also ends up being the enforcement part.
Right, exactly.
All right, very good, thank you.
Well, thanks again, very, very much.
Tom, thank you. And thanks for all the SBCA does in protecting animals.
Anytime we can help, and I think we've had a good working relationship with Scott and Dell, we've hopefully improved that, so...
Excellent.
So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you both. Okay, Steve, could I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss imminent court action? And we'll do that after discussion.
Sure, I'd like to move to go into executive session for the imminent court discussion, court action.
Second.
Roll call.
Yambly?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. And now we'll go into discussion session.
Okay, yeah, I just had, the one item was support for House Bill 206. This involves township police officers on interstate. The issue dates back to a decision back in the slip decision by the Supreme Court in 2015, State of Ohio v. Brown, which actually eliminated the authority of township police arrest authority for traffic violations in not only interstates, but also all state, all federally funded state highways. There was a case that rose up in Medina County, an OVI on Route 18, that Montville ended up and Steve Applevein was forced to dismiss it. And so hence it came to us, we were able to work out some compromise, but we could only get the state highways. And then the interstate remained as an issue for many. And this is a, this involves just the arrest authority of township police officers and townships under 50,000 or more than 5,000 to provide that authority. It has to be approved by the township trustees that have that. And likewise, fully clear, I think, to reemphasize is that the fines collected from any kind of speeding ticket or moving violation issued by the township officer on that interstate highway would continue to go to the county treasury for highway maintenance. So that way it kind of avoids any kind of, it's a safeguard against what might suggest are unwarranted speed traps solely for monetary purposes. The only reason they're up there is for enforcement purposes. And it really does, and our Drug Task Force endorsed this bill last GA, as well as the prior, Mayor Hanwell, Pat Geisman had written a letter that I shared with you, and this is an update to that and hopefully we can move it through. The Sheriff's Association had been in opposition, they moved to not opposing it because they, with an agreement that it could only include townships that have interstate interchanges within the township. So in Brunswick Hills, since they don't have an interchange, they would not be able to go on the interstate. But they get called up all the time, as so does, you know, we found a testimony, Copley Police would get, township would get called up on 21, and the state highway patrol is 40 minutes away, they couldn't do anything, they had no arrest authority. And so this is for, you know, traffic, for drug interdiction, for human trafficking, for sex trafficking, all these kind of things, they're used by the other law enforcement agencies and needed to help patrol and help keep an eye on. So this is really about public safety.
Do you think we need a formal letter of support or just contacting our state reps?
Well, our state reps knows this, but this formal letter of support that are prepared, Terry Greiss is likewise going to be signing it because he was the chief of police in Montville that brought it to our attention years ago. So, and he continues to support it. I'll just say that, you know, obviously it's not everything that Terry would have liked, but it certainly, it makes some sense to, obviously to help support it. There's going to be a harder time in the Senate, I think, to kind of work through some of the issues. The Senate president voted against it last General Assembly while it didn't make out. So they've got a high threshold, so I think coming early in will help us, help get it out of the House. It passed the House, so at this point it's just a matter of getting it out of the House and having enough that it can basically be worked out through the Senate, so...
It's sensible, the populations are interesting, but...
Well...
Limitate, yeah.
It was more of a political decision and there was the understand, somebody said a township could become a municipality of 5,000 population if they want to, in which case they would have home rule and could be on the interstate. So that's why 5,000 was said, "Okay, that's good enough, we'll do it that way." So like I said, the, believe it or not, the issue that emerged in other areas had to do with, we'll just say, the confiscation of drugs and the funds derived from that. Many of the sheriffs in other parts of the state liked those confiscations. And we have a Drug Task Force, it gets shared when there are drugs, right, and we know that we've got it. Other states didn't have that, so there were a number of sheriffs that didn't quite like the idea of potentially sharing some of those resources, forfeitures to township police. And it was about money, unfortunately, for some of them. But that's changed. Sheriff Miller had always been in favor of this, and now Sheriff Greiss is likewise.
Good.
Very good. Anything else, Steve?
Nope, that's it.
Alan, Scott?
Yeah, I wanted to talk to you real quick. As you may know, Columbia Gas Transmission increased the transportation costs for natural gas. Voluntary Energy, who is the provider of natural gas for the county aggregation program, passed through this charge of 7.145 cents per CCF. There's also polar vortex charge that they charged for the month of March. They took a $10 million hit because of the polar vortex. So based on the agreement that we have with Voluntary Energy and based on the information that, the agreements that they have with the residents in the aggregation program, we didn't feel that it was fair for them to impose these charges without giving residents an option. So last week, Mike Lyons and I, Kevin Lottergen with Community Energy Advisors, met with the PUCO and with Voluntary Energy. They came to a compromise where they will be refunding the polar vortex charge to our residents that was charged. It was about nine cents, so if you had 100 CCF, it'd be, what, about $9, I guess, to the residents. And for the transportation charge, they made it easier for the residents to opt out. But what's going to happen is a resident, they're going to get a letter from Voluntary Energy, they'll have the option to opt out. If they opt out of the aggregation program, they will then get refunded for the transportation charges that they were billed in February and in March. Then they'll have the option to get back into the program. But basically what we did was, is the way that residents can opt out is there, in the letter, there's going to be a form that they can either, they can fill out the form and send it in, there's a phone number that they can call to opt out, or they can go to the website and they can opt out that way. If they do opt out, they'll go to the SCO rate, which is 17 cents per CCF. If they stay in the program and don't opt out, it's 16.7 cents per CCF. So just wanted to let you know that we did talk to them, that residents can expect a refund of the polar vortex charge, and they do have the option of opting out and getting refunded for the TCO charge. We figure it's going to be somewhere about $20 if they opt out, $20 refunded to the residents. For Voluntary Energy, it's like 180,000 per month, so it's a substantial amount for them.
So, is the transportation charge and the polar vortex charge only for two months?
No.
Or a month?
No. Per the agreement that we had with Voluntary Energy and per the agreement that they had with the residents, it went to March 31st and April 1st, we felt that there was absolutely, that Voluntary Energy had the ability to charge that, but not before April 1st because the agreement said that guaranteed a rate from, through March 31st. With the polar vortex charge, yeah, it was just one month.
So they sold more gas, generated more revenue, and then they want to smack you with a polar vortex charge, huh?
Well, yeah, well, what happened was, as I understand it, is they've got, you know, these contracts in place and for a certain amount of gas. Well, when the polar vortex hit, the gas usage went up, so they had to purchase additional gas at a higher cost than what they had. So they took, they took a major hit, that $10 million hit in March.
Is that what happened? Does that have everything to do with what happened in Texas?
I believe so, yes.
And so basically with the cascading effect in terms of the contracts and the increased cost of that?
Yeah.
Which is actually part of the risk of them quoting.
You know, it's part of the...
It is, it is, which is one of the reasons why they, you know, in talking to them, they felt that they would go ahead and refund the polar vortex charge.
It seems to be a business for us, they assume, when they struck the deal.
I would think so.
It's part of the contract.
Right.
Yeah. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Anything else, Scott?
No.
Rodney, Denise? All right, let's go into executive session and then we will return to formally adjourned.[1284.54]
Boot or adjourn?
Second.
What call please?
Campbell?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
That's it.
Yes. We're adjourned. See you all next week.